So this is the St. Paul Planning Commission meeting for November 12th, 2021. I am Commissioner Grill and I'm going to do a notice quick and then we'll get into the regular agenda. So notice to the commissioners and the public, the Chair of the Planning Commission has determined that it's not practical nor prudent for the Planning Commission and its committees to meet in person or pursuant to Minnesota statute section 13D point oh two. In light of the COVID-19 health pandemic, it's not feasible for any member of the Planning Commission to be present at the regular location. And all members of the Planning Commission will attend this meeting by telephone or other electronic means. It's also not much feasible for members of the public to attend this meeting at its regular location due to the health pandemic and emergency. Accordingly, no meeting is being held in the City Hall Conference Center Room 40 at 15 West Calhoun Boulevard. And if you are currently monitoring this meeting, then you did find it through Microsoft Teams or on your phone. And with that, we can move forward to the chairs and announcements. As you can hear, I'm not Chair Ringo Morales, I'm the Vice Chair Commissioner Grill. And I'll be stopping in for the chair today. This is my first time chairing the full Planning Commission meeting, so anyone feel free to help me out if I get stuck. And then for everybody else, just remember to keep yourself muted if you're not currently speaking. And then I will hand it off to the Planning Director for his announcements.
We need a roll call vote.
Thank you, Sonia. Can we get a roll call vote? For attendance.
Will do. Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Cantner.
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Presley.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Risberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Commissioner Taggia.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Underwood. And Commissioner Yang is excused and Commissioner Grill.
Here.
That's it.
Thank you, Sonia. Now to the Planning Director's announcements.
Thank you, Chair Grill and Commissioners and the members of the public. Just a couple of announcements, you may have been following this at City Council this week. We had, the City Council formally acted to approve the homeless services zoning study text amendments. With some additional amendments that were put into place since the Planning Commission recommendation. So they, the Council specified conditions under which emergency beds could be used to specify during a declared windshield advisory by the National Weather Service. In addition, for facilities to establish a clear operator point of contact, a stated commitment from the service facility to engage with the District Council and law enforcement to foster ongoing communication, collaboration, and problem solving as needed, and a litter collection plan. So that, that was a final adoption this week and would, would go into effect within a month or by a month out under normal circumstances. The second thing that I'll mention is that the religious accessory uses study. Recently, we held a public hearing on that, had a lot of good feedback. During the meeting itself, came up with the idea of a, kind of a, a discussion feedback session with religious institutions before we bring the revised study back to the, the Comp and Neighborhood Planning Committee. And so that, that date has been set up for November 16th. And staff has put together a revised proposal that I think greatly improves and on the, on the, the proposal from before and responds to many or all of those concerns. So that will further inform the, the working of proposal and we hope to bring that back to committee in early December. Those are my two announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And then we will move to zoning committee.
Thank you, Chair Grill, this is Commissioner Riley. We had three cases on the agenda for the zoning committee of November 4th. And the first was a rezoning for a, I'm sorry, that's not correct. The first was a expansion of a non-conforming use permit for 1688 Dayton. This was an expansion of an, of an existing non-conforming triplex to replace the existing rear stairway. The applicants requested an expansion of their existing legal non-conforming use permit in order to construct an enclosed stairway at the rear of their building to make it safer and quieter for residents to come and go. It's an owner occupied triplex with a dwelling unit on each level of the house. Because the footprint of the building was being expanded due to the addition of the enclosed stairs, enclosed stairwell, that's why the non-conforming use permit was required. The staff recommendation was to approve the expansion of a non-conforming triplex to replace the existing rear stairway, exterior stairways with an enclosed stairway at 1688 Dayton, subject to a condition that final plans approved by the zoning administrator for the user in substantial compliance with the plans submitted and approved as part of the application. We received one letter in opposition, no one spoke in support or in opposition at the hearing. And the staff recommendation was recommended for approval with a condition six zero. So that's the first case. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, comments, et cetera, but the motion out of committee is approval with that condition.
Do any commissioners have questions for Commissioner Riley? All right, based on that, Sonia, can we have a roll call though?
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
I don't think her.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Yang. Oh, I'm sorry, he's excused. And Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Unanimous.
Thank you, Sonia. Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Sonia. Thank you, Chair Grill. Commissioner Riley, again, our second item was for the rezoning of 1708 Selby, which is currently zoned B2 community business. And the application was to rezone it to RM2 medium density multiple family residential. The project, the applicant owns the property and proposed to rezone that property and combine the parcel with the two parcels to the west at 1712 and 1716 Selby Avenue to construct an apartment building. This would have approximately 36 to 38 units. It would be five stories with one, with an element of structured parking on the ground level with approximately 17 to 19 spaces. There would be apartments above primarily studios and one bedrooms, studios and one bedrooms with a, with some two, two bedroom, some two bedroom units proposed as well. This was a rezoning application, so there were no site plans or other renderings or drawings because if the rezoning was not successful, the development developer was planning to move forward with the development on the other two parcels. This application had six people speaking in opposition along with four letters in opposition, some of which were written by the speakers and a petition with 35 signatures asking the commission to deny the rezoning. The staff recommendation was to recommend approval of the request to rezone property at 1708 Selby Avenue from B2 community business to RM2 medium density multiple family residential. And the application, the staff recommendation was forwarded to this body for approval unanimously. And with that one, I'm also happy to take questions or comments or if there are other members of the zoning committee who would like to add anything that I may have missed. One thing I want to note is that this did bring up conversations that have been being had at the commission level and the city level for a long time regarding density on certain routes, including Selby and similarly developed former streetcar streets, et cetera. So we did have that discussion as well. And with that, I'll just restate that the motion out of committee is to recommend the staff approval. It's a staff recommendation for.
All right, are there any commissioners with questions for Commissioner Riley? Looks like we have one question, if you'd like to direct that to Commissioner Riley.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. What were the main objections from the, in the letters and those who spoke?
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell and Chair Grill. The primary concerns were the density, the massing concerns about whether it fit in the neighborhood and that it was an inappropriately large development for the space in the block. That was the primary. Those were the primary concerns, as I recall, but perhaps other members of the committee would like to add. And then I also see Commissioner Moore, but I'll defer to that chair.
All right, thank you for your question. We'll go to Commissioner Moore for his.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Jake and Dr. Mitchell, thank you. In, in line with her questioning, is there a similar property in close proximity that we can reference in, in terms of, of size and scope? Thank you.
Thank you for, oh, go ahead Chair, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Yes, so to the, the blocking question, just to give everyone a little more familiarity, is just to the east of the point where Selby terminates sort of at Fairview near where perhaps the Blue Door Pub is, if people are familiar with that part of Selby. And then it's, the proposed zoning is compatible with an RM2 district to the north and west. And then there's an apartment building immediately to the east of the subject property and one immediately to the southwest. They are less tall, but are similar. I think the closest five-story building is a little bit more to the east and then also in the surrounding neighborhood. But perhaps if appropriate, staff would be willing to add some context or perhaps someone from Union Park District Council or neighborhood. That would help me out a lot. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Grill. If the staff member on the case, which I think was Katie, if you're available to provide any context, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Chair Grill, Commissioner Riley. Yeah, I think that Commissioner Riley said it correctly in that the property along Selby Avenue is already zoned RM2. This is one parcel that's being requested to be rezoned from B2 to RM2. There are some apartment buildings within this stretch of Selby Avenue. But to find something probably as big as that, you might need to go to Snelling or Marshall Avenue. But the comprehensive plan does identify Selby Avenue as a mixed-use corridor. And it calls for increased density in mixed-use corridors as we try to find appropriate locations in the city where we can provide increased density. And we look to those to be those that can provide proximity to transit. And here we've got Selby Avenue, which is a future BRT line in a couple of years, and that's about three blocks, three or four blocks to the north and A-line running along Snelling Avenue, three or four blocks to the east.
Thank you. I'm going to go Commissioner Riley and then I'll go back to Commissioner Moore if your hands up because you have a second question. Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair Grill, and thank you, Ms. Douglas, that was really helpful. One thing I do want to note that I should have included in my initial summary is that five stories is the, is the allowed height in RM2. So it is, they're not asking for any additional height over and above anything at this time that is already permitted. So perhaps that helps answer some additional questions. And I did want to, I should have highlighted that the land use and housing chapters of the comprehensive plan support this kind of development alongside. Thank you.
Fair vote, Commissioner Riley. It looks like that has answered folks' questions. So if you want to restate the motion that's currently on the floor, and then we'll take a roll call vote if, unless we have any other questions that come up in the next 20 seconds.
Thank you, Chair Grill, Commissioner Riley again. So again, the motion out of committee was to move the staff recommendation, which was to approve the request to rezone the property at 1708 Selby Avenue from B2 community business to RM2 medium density multiple family residential. And it was a unanimous recommendation to this body. Thank you.
All right, so that is the motion. I'll just take a roll.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
No.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Risberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said. Commissioner Said. Commissioner Taggia. Okay, got you. Commissioner Taggia.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Well, one.
Commissioner Grill is also yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Grill, you don't vote on zoning cases on, at, at Planning Commission? I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Thank you, Sonia. I appreciate that. All right, and then that's the last, then we have the last case for Commissioner Riley, if you want to go through that.
Thank you, Chair Grill, this is Commissioner Riley. The last case at our meeting on November 4th was for a conditional use permit for an outdoor recycling processing center at 551 Barge Channel Road. This item was for some added, hang on, I lost my notes, sorry about that, bear with me one second. Okay, so this is the proposed project is, was a concrete pad surrounded by an eight-foot enclosure consisting of concrete walls topped with an obscuring fence with some stormwater mitigation involved. And this is, the pad is elevated on fill above the floodplain. There's no required CUP for this flood, floodplain location due to where it is. And this was, this is in a, I guess it's an improvement upon an existing set of storage opportunities for the, for the recycling center at Northern Metals Recycling, which is at 551 Barge Channel Road. The staff recommendation was approval of the conditional use permit for an outdoor recycling processing center at 551 Barge Channel Road, subject to four conditions. One, that final plans approved by the zoning administrator for the use shall be in substantial compliance with the plan submitted and approved as part of this application in general. And with regard to, and with regard in particular to the location and configuration of the concrete pad and enclosure, acceptance by the zoning administrator of flood response plan ensuring access to remove materials and/or accumulated stormwater as needed during times of flooding. No open burning shall take place on the site and no stacking of material above the height of the obscuring structure wall or fence, except that material set back 300 feet from the nearest residential zoning district may be stacked one foot higher than the obscuring structure wall or fence for every additional five feet. The material is set back from the nearest residential zoning district up to a maximum of 60 feet. And so the motion out of committee to this body is to move the staff recommendation for approval with those four conditions. And I'm happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns from the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for Commissioner Riley? All right, it does not look like that. And you just so eloquently went through the motion, so Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley. Commissioner Presley. Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Risberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, looks like we had a unanimous vote for that. And then that is it for zoning unless you have some updates for us, Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair Grill, just one. There will be no zoning committee meeting on November 18th. And we have one application for sure for the December 9th meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. We will then move to Commissioner Holt's and Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee.
Good morning, Commissioners. We had a meeting on November 3rd, I believe, where we brought back one, one to four infold unit housing zoning study phase one with some amendments. After the public discussion and a few other items, what was changed in the one to four unit housing zoning study phase one was the non-owner occupancy of ADUs was put back in. We had a discussion on this for about an hour and a half. We ultimately adopted it with that, with a six-three. Mr. Wade, was there any pieces that you wanted to cover for the entire group since it has changed or or we can just stand for questions?
Good, good morning, Commissioner Holt, Chair Grill. This is Michael Wade, City Planner on the, this project. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the PAC material has been passed on to everyone. Also, my colleagues Emma Siegworth and Director Pereira are on the line also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Commissioner Holt.
Well, again, we'll stand for questions, otherwise we will move that, that we, the one to four infold unit housing zoning study phase one amendments recommendation from the committee is to approve the draft resolution and move forward to the City Council for adoption.
All right, it looks like we've got one question. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed there are a couple of emails about the removal of the ADU requirements. And I was just curious as a quick summary as to how, what the discussion was in committee on that one point.
So it was, it was a long discussion. We covered a lot of different items. I guess if committee members want to kind of speak to it, I'm certainly going to invite that as well. But there were concerns about whether or not this would lead to outside developers coming in, buying ADUs. There was concerns about extra density in the neighborhoods. There was support for the idea of providing more housing, giving more flexibility in communities. So there was really a broad, quite frankly, there was a broad number of topics that came up around it. But if anyone from the committee would like to comment to that or, or one of their points, I'd certainly invite that.
If any Commissioners that are members of the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee have additional comments that they'd like to add, just raise your hand and I can call on you. Okay, looks like we don't have any additional comments on that. Commissioner Taggia and Commissioner Holt, does that get your question answered?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
All right, so we have the motion. We have had some discussion. And we have the motion coming out of committee from Commissioner Holt. Do you want to restate the motion perhaps one more time?
Sure, I noticed Louise has got his.
Director Pere.
Yeah, I just want to be totally transparent and I'm not trying to interfere with the decision-making process. But the, the three votes that were kind of in opposition to the recommendation were Chair Rahal Morales and Commissioner Yang and Commissioner Moore. Two of, two of them aren't here today as, as my understanding, as, which is my understanding. I don't know if Commissioner Moore is still here. I was looking at the attendee list. Whether, you know, whether he had any thoughts about it. I know you've already asked for, for people to comment, but just to make sure sort of people understood, you know, the nature of the conversation. Not to put you on the spot, sorry, Commissioner Moore, if you feel that way.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Moore.
Sorry, I'm chuckling. Thank you, thank you. And that is fair. I didn't realize that they were not here. So I think it is important to speak, so thank you. So it's my understanding that ADUs are one of the tools or arrows in the quiver that we have to increase the amount of housing and housing stock in the city of St. Paul. My concern is that when we remove the language for owner occupancy, we run the risk of having disparate. Let me just speak plainly. We run the risk of having slum lords and I see this as a predatory thing for my area where we have, where we already have groups that do not serve our, our local areas to the best of their ability. They don't do anything to increase the visual appeal of the neighborhood. And when we open it up and we take away the restrictions, now we're opening it up for people that have the capital to build these ADUs, but do it in a manner that, that's not a positive for, for the community. And so that was my, my concern and also the density in, in my area, we don't have garages. Homes were built in the 1800s and so we talked about parking being an issue before with, with the amount of cars. And so increasing that density would increase the amount of vehicles, et cetera. So those are the reasons why I had opposition. I do want to say that I did mention that there, I, I do some, some running in my neighborhood, so I get to see all the different types of houses. And I have seen an ADU that's really done well on, and so I understand it. But if, if, if I were to knock on the door and ask if they were owner occupants, I bet they, they were. And so that's, that's, that's my position. Thank you. Sorry for going long.
No, thank you, Commissioner Moore. I didn't want to put you on the spot, and I'm glad that the director said. I don't know, Commissioner Holt, if you want to add anything in addition to that, or if there are other questions.
No, I think Commissioner Moore summed it up pretty well, what the concerns around opposition were. I think discussions around support would have included things that we're in a housing crisis, we're really short on homes, flexibility with your property were topics that were discussed as a positive thing. And as a possible mechanism for wealth building for others that may, you know, have a home, or at least they'd have the option then after building an ADU on the home to continue to keep that property if they wanted to. So but yeah, that pretty much covers it, I think, so.
Okay, if you would like to restate the motion.
Sure. So the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee recommends to approve the draft resolution for the City Council for adoption, the one to four infill unit housing zoning study Phase 1 amendments.
All right, wonderful. Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill, you get to vote on this one.
Thank you, Sonia. Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
No.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And I see Commissioner Underwood is here.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Sonia. I just joined, so I think I'll pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, yeses and two noes.
Thank you, Sonia. Commissioner Holt, do you have any additional announcements?
I do not. Actually, I'm sorry. I should have had when our next meeting is. If staff could help me out, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner Holt, we are aiming for December 1st CNPC, and we hope to have a really great religious accessory uses zoning study package that responds to the public hearing comments and special input comments from religious institutions on that date.
Thank you, Director Pereira, and thank you, Commissioner Holt.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will move to Transportation Committee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Jeff Rizberg here. So our next meeting is Monday, the 15th, this coming Monday. We're going to have two items where we'll be seeking where there is a request for our recommendation. The first is a bridge replacement of about 1,000 feet for the eastbound Kellogg River Center Bridge. And the second item is a pavement and utility improvement on Prior Avenue. So if you're interested in those topics, please tune in. Should be an interesting discussion at 4:30 on Monday. I also want to mention on Tuesday, the 16th, there was an announcement that there will be a virtual open house that Ramsey County is hosting. This is to discuss the Rice Street Visioning Study, which the Transportation Committee heard a few months ago. And it's a pretty exciting transformation of Rice Street, in my view, to really improve pedestrian bicycle and transit on Rice Street, and much-needed change. And so it's a, it's a project that I encourage people to tune in and listen to in this virtual open house, ask your questions 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I think if you go to the Ramsey County website, and either put in Rice Street Visioning Study, enter that in the search, or go to the, directly to the Future Road Construction page on that website, you can, you can see the Zoom link to the Zoom and tune in. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg, and Communications and Nominations Committee.
Yeah, hi, good morning. We met again this morning. Thanks to the committee members for our 8:00 a.m. huddles. And for those of you who have been around Planning Commission for a while, you'll be excited that the team, the PED, under Louise's leadership, is going to have a digital annual report this year. So, which is very exciting. We had a lot of fun coming up with some creative, dynamic ideas and ways to share breadth of information and to also share what Planning Commission is working through, what at times it has struggled with in the last year, what it is asking of community and city leadership, which I think is really awesome, very reflective of who we are as the Planning Commission evolves. So that's exciting. And then the announcements for openings are out there in the interwebs. I strongly encourage you to share and forward and help recruit. We will continue meeting prior to Planning Commission meetings over the next few meetings to review applications and keep that process moving forward as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Underwood. And then we'll move on to Task Force. Commissioner DeJoy, do you have an update?
I don't have an update beyond what I reported on on October 29th, but we are meeting again on November 16th. And then again, our final meeting is expected to be December 14th, and that was moved from December 21st, where we would normally meet. So we did, there's a few more processes that will be taking place. It'll be a review by the Community Advisory Committee. The final plans will be reviewed by the Planning Commission, City Council, and other processes, including rezoning, zoning code amendments, comprehensive plan amendments. There will be public, public meetings, public testimony. So yeah, we'll be wrapping up our work in December, and that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. And then I will give the Riverview update. So this is Commissioner Grill. So the Riverview Station Area Planning Task Force had canceled their November meeting, but there is currently out on the Ramsey County website a station area planning survey that focuses on St. Clair, Randolph, and the auto station areas, so West 7th and the intersection of those particular areas. If folks would like to comment on the survey, it's available on the Ramsey County website under the Riverview Corridor section. I do recommend that people, if you have comments, please provide those. And then there will be a meeting on Wednesday, December 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. that will talk about how historical properties will be considered as part of the project and how residents can participate in the process. So there's a Zoom meeting scheduled for November 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on those historical properties. That information is also available on the Riverview Corridor page. And that is the extent of my update for that particular task force. And with that, we do not have any old business. Director Pereira?
Yeah, yes, thank you. I just wanted to jump in here at the last minute, and I encourage again the commissioners to reach out to folks to consider applying for the Planning Commission. We have a few applications that have come in, and we are open until November 24th for, to apply. I've had some folks reach out and ask me some questions about it. I think, you know, encouraging people from Ward 6, from Ward 1, from Ward 5, we've had two spots for Ward 4. So Ward 4, typically we haven't had any trouble getting applicants, but don't have any in the queue right now. So just as a heads up to encourage commissioners to reach out and talk to folks about that opportunity. And then second, and maybe I should have said this earlier, we don't have any agenda items for December 3rd at the moment. So there's a possibility we cancel that meeting, but that could change. But at the moment, we are thinking that that may not be a meeting. So if that happens, our next meeting would be the 17th of December, where we do have for sure items to address. So stay tuned on that, on that point.
Thank you. I wasn't sure from your email if I was supposed to bring that up or not, so thank you for clarifying. Wonderful. So that was old business, new business. Unless folks have any other items, we will adjourn at 9:13.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we don't have any. Everyone have a great day.
Great job, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Great job.